Regular Board of Ed meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you could rise for the moment of silence.
I would like to take tonight's moment of silence to honor Dave Carteropoly, a teacher from Enfield High. He was affectionately known as Cardo. I would always see Cardo while he was working security, whether it be for a football game, a basketball game, et cetera. To say he was one of the nicest people you meet is an understatement. Each time I saw him, we would catch up on the latest happenings around town or talk about the game in front of us. One thing that always happened is that we would share a laugh every single time. What makes Cardo so special is that many who interacted with him daily had the exact same interaction that always ended with a smile and laugh. I have heard many of his colleagues speak of his impact on students in his years of teaching. Cardo left his mark on many students and they will all end. Cardo left his mark on many students and they and us will always remember him fondly. Someone once said, "Students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." This is the embodiment of Cardo. Please take this moment of silence in honor of Cardo and send thoughts and sympathies to his loved ones.
The Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Fire evacuation announcement. We have double doors in the back. Follow up the double doors out to the parking lot. The double doors to my left, your right, down the stairs and out to the parking lot. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Hamery?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Madam Chair?
Here. Item six, Board Guest. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have special guests. I'd like to first call up our Social Studies Coordinator, Joel Sine. Sorry, it's Joel. Who's brought some special guests from our Youth Vote Program. And I'll allow Mr. Sine to do the intro. Actually, you guys are running Youth Vote. You can introduce yourselves.
Yep. You can take care of yourselves.
You don't need me to do that. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Bemis.
I'm Omar Atwe.
And I'm Emily Kukaski.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. As Nelson Mandela said, "An educated, enlightened, and informed population is one of the surest ways of ensuring a healthy democracy." Informing our fellow EPS students and the voting public is at the core of the Enfield Public Schools Youth Vote Program. With that in mind, we are here to share several upcoming events related to the election. First, we are excited to announce and formally invite the Board of Ed and Town Council, candidates, constables, as well as the general public to our annual Meet the Candidates Night to be held in the EHS Cafeteria on Wednesday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. EPS students and constituents are invited to come and talk to the candidates on the ballot and get to know their local officials.
In preparation to our Meet the Candidates Night, students at JFK will be engaging in Youth Vote Listen related to our local election and system of government. The program, uh, system of government. As a circumstance to the unit, students will be developing questions for the candidates. At the elementary level, students in 4th and 5th grade are participating in the Connecticut Kid Govern Program. The program is an opportunity to engage in civic life by learning to vote, then critically lead, research, and propose solutions for community issues, and carry out plans for change. Participation in the kid program helps prepare students for an active and meaningful engagement in civic life.
Thank you.
Of course, it would not be an election in Enfield without our Youth Vote Program. Students in 4th through 12th grade are encouraged to come out to the polling sites in town and cast their ballots on Tuesday, November 7th. We will have voting booths for the kids set up at each polling site in town, so students may vote in the mock election based on the authentic ballot that their adult sees. And kids, please remember to bring your adults out to vote on Election Day. Youth Vote is not done working on Election Day. We will continue to inform our classmates on the need to be civically engaged throughout the year. This, sorry, this culminates with a voter registration drive in cooperation with the Enfield Registrar of Voters Office at EHS next spring. Thank you to our advisors for all their hard work on these events. Mr. Tony Allegro, Mr. Seem Patrick Crane, and Mr. Amy Whitbro. As you can see, we have a lot going on, but this work is at the core of the EPS mission statement. We believe public education is an essential component of a free and democratic society. Our work is that statement put in action.
So, just very quickly, don't go away. Mr. Crane and Mr. Allegro, as you know, and Ms. Whitbro worked tirelessly on this program. I just kind of hang out in the back like I did tonight. Sean, Mr. Crane, is teaching a appropriately citizenship class tonight at the Annex. And Mr. Allegro just got off the soccer field, so just kind of speaks to their continuing dedication to our students well beyond the school day. So, thank you. Nice job. And any questions that you have?
Sure. Mr. Ryder?
Just a quick question. So, the hours of polling for adults is 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. What are the Youth Vote hours?
So, we'll get there at 8:00.
So, starting at 8:00 AM, the kids can vote. Okay. And that's through 8:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hamery?
I had a quick thought. And I love the Youth Vote. I've been participating with my children for as long as they've been in the school system. And now, two of them are their own voting adults, so it's been a while. I've been on the side that asks questions of the people that show up for the nominations for the candidates, and it's really an eye-opening opportunity. The one thing I want to just highlight is kind of a technicality here, but the Youth Vote is a semi-annual thing that happens with the election cycle, which it should be. But wouldn't it be great if we did have an annual event in the off-season, if you will, in the off-year, that we could actually have a discussion with the Board of Ed members, students asking the questions of the Board of Ed members during those off-years? Just thinking about that out loud. And I appreciate your coming out here to talk to us about it tonight, and I look forward to being there. Thank you.
So, just in the off-Board of Ed years, we do have the local state rep in Senate and the congressional candidates that we invite to do something similar. But we'll give them a shot at you in those off-Ed years, too. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Pickett?
First, I want to say thank you for coming tonight. I know it's not easy to sit there and look at all of us and be on YouTube land, but we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate the work that you're doing to organize this and support it. Honestly, I wish students could be more integratively involved. I'm so excited that our student reps are here and to hear from you all and kind of sharing the vision for your work, the importance of public education, informing folks about democracy. I really appreciate that work. So, thank you. And I love Meet the Candidates Night, so I can't wait for that. And Youth Vote, my little ones are going to be very sad. They're like on the cusp. I have a 1st grader and a 3rd grader, but they come and vote with us every election, so that will be exciting, and they see you all. And I'm going to ask for the spring voter registration, if there's any way that we can help or support or any of that, please let us know. And to our staff who go above and beyond, thank you, and it's recognized, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Ms. Akri?
Kudos to you, Mr. Sinez, and your support staff and your students for a great presentation. I think, being a retired teacher, it's important for students to learn about the government and politics and the process of how US citizens are elected in our country, you know, for votes for presidency and local elections and so on. So, I am looking forward to attending the Meet and Greet Candidate Night. Thank you.
Dr. Kalman?
I think one of the nice things about this program is your attention to a municipal election. You could teach the adults a lot about that, because the turnout is traditionally very, very low for municipal elections. And I think this is an excellent opportunity to highlight the fact that municipal elections are awfully important, because as one man once said, "All politics is local." So, great. Good for you.
Thank you. Mr. Ungeyer?
Just quickly, DePere, thank you for coming and seeing us here this evening and all that you're doing to help promote democracy. As you probably know, there are millions and millions of people in this world who don't have the opportunity to vote and to choose their leaders. And because we have leaders that are accountable to the people that they serve, they tend to not put themselves in positions where they take advantage of their people. So, what you're teaching and what you're helping to promote is the finest form of government in the world, and what a privilege it is to be a part of it and to help promote it. So, thank you.
Okay. So, I just have a few comments. I was going to talk to, speak to what Dr. Kalman spoke to about how a lot of people don't come out to the local elections, and the local elections directly impact you when it comes down to policies and mil rates and all that fun stuff. And I wish more people would take the opportunity to focus on the local elections. Statistically, the turnout is very low, and I wish more people knew that. So, I appreciate you guys getting involved in your school government. I was going to ask the same thing as Ms. Pickett. I remember when I was in high school, about five years ago. Yeah, I was 6. At Fermi, they would have voting registration events in the cafeteria, and we would register to vote. Do they have that currently at Enfield High for?
Yeah. Currently, we just handed out a whole bunch of voting registration flyers. We went around to different Eagle Block classrooms that have seniors or have people who are 18 and older.
Right.
That we knew of, and we handed them out. We did a little speech about voting, and if you want to vote, we can help you. We also have them printed in Spanish, so if anyone who isn't very fluent in English can do it as well. And we've got decent numbers, like, I think like 30 or 40 people took forms, which was good for like the first time around handing out forms. So, we do that every like four or five months. And then, we have like an actual, we had the event last year where people can, we set up a table, and people can actually walk by and sign it with representatives. I forgot who exactly, but representatives came from the town hall, and they helped students sign it, and they brought them right to the town hall after. So, it was like directly.
Yep. We have the Registrar's office coming. Yep.
Mr. Fiore and Mr. Kinsler. I think it's so important that everybody exercises their right to vote, no matter which side they're going to vote for. But it's so important to do that. That is basically your voice to the sitting elected officials, and I really think that's important. I really appreciate your involvement. So, I have to ask, is anybody considering maybe someday you'd want to be an elected official somewhere or run for political office?
What do y'all think? What do y'all think?
You don't have to decide today.
You don't have to decide today. Maybe you'll knock on my door someday. I think there's different things that have motivated us to decide to run for office. So, if somebody asked me when I was a senior in high school, junior in high school, in high school, that answer would have been like, "What are you talking about? I don't, I don't think so." And probably any of us, but there's different motivations for why we run, and I really appreciate you guys coming tonight, and thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to Mr. Barasa. Check your EPS Twitter feed. He sent out our Youth Vote infomercial today, so it'll teach everybody how to vote, register anyways, so thank you.
Excellent.
Moving on to item seven, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kayla has a very important project to get to, so we're going to let her go first, and then she's not going to be rude and leave, but Izzy, she gets to go first this time because she's a senior. But then, she has to go do a very important project that I don't want to be responsible if she misses the deadline. So, I will turn it over to our student rep.
You told me I could.
I know I did. I wasn't expecting that. Okay. So, tomorrow, October 11th, college sessions are starting with the Enfield High Counseling Office to help students with Common App every week. Buzz Robotics will be competing at Bash at the Beach, that competition, this Saturday, October 14th. Triumph held their induction ceremony on October 4th, where they inducted 21 new members. And then, I have some exciting announcements about senior nights for fall sports. Girls' soccer will be held on October 23rd. Field hockey will be on October 25th. Boys' soccer will be on October 26th, and football is on November 3rd. And all games will begin at 6:00, and senior ceremonies will begin at 5:30.
You can leave. I'm kidding.
See what happens when you become the senior rep? We used to give Morgan a hard time, so now it's your turn. Get ready, Izzy, when you're a senior.
Izzy's your turn. You'll be the first to welcome Izzy, our new student rep. And you have big shoes to fill.
Hi, everyone. So, first thing I wanted to talk about is I want to give a shout out to the PE teachers and our student council, who helped make the homecoming, which was September 28th. It was a big help. They set it up in the gym this year, which is pretty new. And also, the following Wednesday, there will be a mobile dental service at EHS for two weeks, the CHC. So, if you want to get your checkups, it's there. PSATs are coming up soon. There's a new update this year. It's going to be on the iPads, and it'll be Wednesday, October 28th. Another save the date is for National Honor Society, induction ceremony is coming up on November 9th. And progress supports have just come out, so report cards should be on their way. So, be ready for that. Thank you.
Good job. They make my job a lot easier. So, students, you're coming off of a five-day weekend. Our staff's coming off of a four-day weekend. Unfortunately, they had to return today for professional development, and all good things come to an end. Everybody's back to school tomorrow, so I just want to welcome everybody back for a little extended weekend break, celebrating the holidays. And I just wanted to take this opportunity, a very brief update. I know sometimes I tell you that I try to keep it short. This one, I'm actually going to keep short. I just wanted to extend my thanks and gratitude to the Enfield High community. As Madam Chair mentioned in her moment of silence, we lost a beloved staff member, and the students, the faculty, and the families of Enfield High School had to endure a bit of a schedule change last week with an unplanned half-day. But that was really a testament to Cardo and the amount of people that wanted to participate in the services for him. And in consultation with his family, we just thought it was the right thing to do, to give everyone the opportunity to pay their respects to somebody who meant so much to not only his students, but to this town in general for decades. So, I appreciate everybody's flexibility. I also want to extend my gratitude to the folks over at Smith Bus for turning that around relatively quickly and making sure we can get our Enfield High students out and still maintain all of our bus runs. But that will conclude the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek. Bottom eight audiences. We have two speakers here tonight. We can allow four minutes. The first person is Christina Tetral. We just need you to say your name and address.
Christina Tetral, 42, Green Manor Road. I noticed something on the Enfield forum this week that caught my attention. A former student of the Enfield Public Schools posted copies of complaints filed against a former teacher that's running for the Board of Ed, some of which included assault. From placing a student in a headlock, to hitting students on the back of the head, to leaving marks on students' hands, and using derogatory and insulting remarks to a large number of students. Multiple students were afraid to attend his class, and all of this was noted in the stuff that was gotten, that's posted online. I can get you copies of if you're interested. There are six bullet points in Enfield's Board of Education mission. If you'd like, I can read them to you. A Board of Education member who has over 30 pages of complaints filed against them is not one that I trust to provide a safe, nurturing environment for my children. I'm guessing, based on the reports posted, that children who would cry not wanting to go to class were not reaching their full potential in those areas. How can you assure me that things like this are not going to happen again? Why are more people not here and upset about this? I'm very disappointed that this person was even nominated with this history. Shouldn't our students' safety be a priority? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tetral.
Maureen Griffin, 98, Abby. I remember this time. First off, Jonathan, thank you for your many years of service, and it truly was service. It wasn't agenda-driven. It was child-driven. It was needs of the students, every student. So, thank you very much for putting that first and not being partisan. And every person up there can learn from Jonathan, because you know what? Others on, on his party, he went against them when he felt it was appropriate. And that's what you're supposed to be doing. You're supposed to be doing what you believe serves the needs of every child, not just the ones that have lives that mirror yours. So, thank you, Jonathan. You've been a wonderful member of the board. Ms. Akri? I'm looking forward to seeing you up there again. I hope that people vote for you. I have to reserve my five for elders, but I hope you are not at the bottom. Regarding what Ms. Tetral spoke about, I read that, and I was horrified. And I really hope that in the times since Mr. Genitus was a teacher, that should something like that happen and those type of reports come through, it wouldn't have been repeatedly written up. It would have banged your tails out the door, and the kids don't have to put up with that, because I would not have backed down. My child would never have put up with that, and I would have backed them up for walking out of that classroom. So, I really hope it wouldn't go forward and be allowed to continue, and I don't think it would be anymore, because I think that nowadays, with the admin that we have, the children's needs are the priority. I also have a question. How's the late bus hunt coming? Because the three days a week Eagle Hour, Eagle Block is insufficient. Added a few minutes to it, but the way the scheduling of it has been constrained, the kids have lost the ability to cross-pollinate in ideas and learning if they don't have the same teacher for a class. The way that they have to sign up now is different. And also, if you want to do a club, you don't have the time. And I just really hope that you're still working towards bringing back more of Eagle Block and hopefully can find a way for more flexibility in scheduling for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. That's it for audiences, so we're going to move on to Board Member comments. Ms. Akri?
First, I would like to thank you, Mrs. Griffith, for your support. Thank you. It was greatly appreciated. I would like to start with updates from Prudence Crandall. This is from the office of Andrew, the Principal Andrew DePeire. He says, "We had a great start to the new school year. Students came to school excited to see their old friends and meet new ones. The teachers worked building community and reviewing prior knowledge. Open house was a success. We had over 200 families represented. This Friday, we will be taking part in Pink Out Day. If you've noticed, some of us Board Members are wearing T-shirts in honor of Pink Out Day. Along with the entire Enfield Public Schools, students can dress in pink and bring in a dollar, optional, to be donated for breast cancer research. And you can also donate online. And so, for the parents at Crandall, please see the link in the Cougar Chronicles newsletter." So, I would like to thank Mr. DePeire and the Crandall staff and students for my cute little Pink Out Day shirt, and I'm honored to wear it for breast cancer awareness. Other Crandall updates. Crandall is collecting donations for the Enfield School, I'm sorry, Enfield Food Shelf. In the past few years, Crandall has held the record for most items donated by a school. The top three classes will get to do something fun, like throw pies at their principal, Mr. DePeire and Mrs. Marchese, and a few brave teachers at the November Assembly. Another shout out to a teacher at Crandall, Mr. Barrett. He's working with LEGO Robotics and is with his 5th grade students, and they are learning to code, to help problem-solve, complete missions, develop skills to work as a team. So, that's a 5th grade project. The next PTO meeting, in collaboration with their sister school, Barnard Elementary, will be held virtually on Zoom on October 17th. And there is a LEGO Club that meets on Tuesdays that started in September, and it goes all the way up to November 7th. This club meets in the Crandall Library. Materials will be provided, but space is limited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Dr. Kalman?
Kite held its annual meeting on October 4th, in place of its usual monthly meeting. This event was held at JFK, and it was a celebration of Kite's accomplishments over the past year and its plans for the coming year. A lot of us on the Board were honored to be able to attend. I think it was really quite a wonderful ceremony. With respect to Head Start, the Head Start Policy Committee met on September 15th to review the findings of the Head Start Community Assessment. David Bechtel, the consultant for the Head Start, who conducted the survey, led this discussion. Enfield demographics relevant to the early childhood population were reviewed and discussed, as were the results of a Head Start family survey. There then followed a discussion about the meaning of these data, and most of this discussion focused on the impact on families of the changing rules of age of kindergarten entrance. Previously, Connecticut children four years of age could enter kindergarten if they turned five by the following January. Now, a child must be five years of age by September in order, in order to enter kindergarten. This makes sense from a developmental standpoint. A child entering kindergarten at four years of age may not be able to master the curriculum designed for those who had entered at five years of age. However, the change in entrance requirements poses a particular challenge to low-income families, who will now be required to enroll their children for an additional year of preschool. This will impose a significant financial burden, and strategies were discussed to address this challenge. I plan to make a more detailed review of the community assessment once the final report is issued. Head Start held its next monthly policy committee meeting on Wednesday, October 4th. The customary statistics were reviewed, but because the year is just beginning, and in the interest of brevity, I'm going to mention only the goals developed for the upcoming four-year grant application. One, access to resources and connections in the community. Two, engage all stakeholders to collective investment in personal and professional growth. And finally, enhance equity by ensuring a supportive and respectful environment. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Ms. Cushman?
Having visited the Career Center last year, I was able to see the program space and meet Ms. Colleen Siniglio and her team. The publication of the Junior Achievement of Southern New England recently recognized Ms. Siniglio as an inspiring educator and valuable junior achievement partner. I want to offer my congratulations to Ms. Siniglio and her team. Thank you for inspiring our students and providing rich and varied opportunities for them to explore so many different career paths and opportunities. It was very encouraging to see last week that the Town Council invited investigator Sue Laupa from the Connecticut Human Trafficking Team and Task Force to present during a special meeting at 6:15. to present during a special meeting at 6:15. Her presentation provided an overview to our community on the very difficult topic of human trafficking as a means to raise awareness of what is happening locally and to start a community conversation in which we explore what can be done to make our community safer for all who may be at risk. There is a program that has been planned and will be held next month on Wednesday, November 15, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That could be a means to continue this valuable conversation. Given that there is more time, there will be more information covered in the presentation, as well as an opportunity for questions from the community. Additional details will be forthcoming soon. Another important topic and conversation to continue is digital citizenship. And that's something that our school district offers, teaching our students appropriate and responsible behavior when using technology on a variety of platforms. Like the discussion on human trafficking, this too is a conversation that should continue and also be revisited often. There's an organization called Defend Young Minds that helps parents and caregivers continue the conversation that begins in school about healthy technology habits at home with their digital self-defense. From their website, defendyoungminds.com, parents can find several free and helpful resources filled with valuable information, like their Quick Start Guide, which is a useful tool for parents to help educate themselves as they in turn teach our students, teach their children. And I brought with me tonight a couple of books that actually is from, are from their site. There's one's called Good Pictures, Bad Pictures. This one's for older children. And then there's Good Pictures, Bad Pictures, Junior, which is for younger student, younger children, which makes the tough talk easy and comfortable and provides parents and caregivers with simple tools and a plan to protect young minds. While using only good pictures, these books clearly define for children, young and old, what good and bad pictures are and how their brains can be affected by bad pictures. Like the stop, drop, and roll that we all learn for fire safety, these books can teach young children to turn, run, and tell, to stay safe. Or they can use the acrostic can-do that they establish for older kids. I appreciate how these books do not shame children if they have seen bad pictures and how they encourage children to go to their parents and caregivers for help and protection, not to avoid them. These books also offer strategies for parents to help their children forget bad pictures. And ultimately, these kids teach kids how to protect themselves, especially with a very common use of technology, both in school and at home. And I hope that parents will be inspired by these books. And I hope that they'll be on the shelves in our public libraries soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman. Mr. Hamery?
Thank you very much. First, I want to start off with an update from JFK. And I appreciate the new PTO president, Kathy, for providing some details. The next PTO meeting is actually tomorrow night, 6:30, in the conference room off the main lobby over there. I do hope to attend. I do have a previous obligation that will not allow me to stay for the whole thing, but I will try to get to that PTO meeting for the JFK tomorrow night. They had just completed their first fundraiser. They are participating in Pink Out this Friday. They are hosting a year-long spirit fundraiser. And later on in the year, there's going to be a Penny Wars. So, stay tuned for that and start saving those pieces of copper. Enfield Instrumental Music Association is going to be having a fundraiser, excuse me, Thursday, October 19, at the Texas Roadhouse in Springfield. So, if you're able to attend the Texas Roadhouse Thursday, October 19, they're going to be getting a percentage, 20% of the night's proceeds will go to the Enfield Instrumental Music Association. I do want to thank Kite for inviting me to the annual meeting. It was, as mentioned earlier, very, very rewarding to see the work that they do and to know that they are in a position to continue doing the great work that benefits the youngest among us, our youngest students and their families, all the way through adults, through the various programs that they support. Couple of things I want to go slightly off my usual talk before. There's a, on the town council side of things in this town, there's going to be a requirement that they open the town charter next year. And I want to give a little bit of a backstory to this next statement. We have some, I've had some issues with board member activities in the last year where there've been efforts to ban books, where there's been efforts to remove policies that protect the LGBTQ community and things of that nature. I would offer and challenge and request that the town council, when they consider opening the charter next year, that they look at opening the board makeup, that the Board of Education is comprised instead of Republican, Democrat, that it's comprised of a nonpartisan group of individuals that want to do the best for our students and their families. So, it might be a little bit of a quagmire to get into, but as the revision, as a charter revision always is. But I've seen a lot of good people in town over the years get involved in the schools, have really good ideas, and then not be able to get a voice because of the structure that's in place, of how we get to this point where we're sitting at the dais and making those decisions that affect our district and our families and our students. So, I would challenge and request that the town charter be considering making changes to the makeup of what the Board of Education here is in Enfield. It's done all over the country, all over the state. It's, we are the exception more than we are the rule. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to that. And I do want to ask, again, a little off-topic here, that our new basketball court back here behind Town Hall be provided lights and a taller fence so that the ball doesn't have to get chased down across the street potentially or into the driveways or the fields. That would be really great. And a perennial thing that we hear about on a regular basis since the, probably since the high school was built initially, is the traffic at the high school. I've had several comments from folks I've talked to in the recent weeks about the very dangerous conditions with the traffic getting in and out of the high school. And if there's any way that that could be, again, revisited. I know it's been a topic every once in a while. I'd like to see if there's anything that can be done about that for our families and our students. And with that note, student drivers, please be careful. As Superintendent mentioned earlier, thoughts and very, very sincere condolences to the impact of the family and the friends and the colleagues that are grieving Mr. Cardo. Didn't have the opportunity to know him at all myself. My son was going to be a student in his class this year and will not be able to benefit from his expertise and personality and everything he brought to the Enfield High School. Additionally, thoughts to the people impacted immediately and afterwards for what's happening in Israel. On a lighter note, Enfield High School football, 4-0. I mean, I don't know when the last time that happened was, but they've been playing some amazing football this year. And I don't know if we'll be able to make it to the next game, but I really do hope to be there and watch them do it again. Excuse me. And while I was listening earlier to Ms. Cushman talk about the website, Defend Your Minds, I have concerns, but I'm going to trust that it's a legitimate resource. But it does seem to be stressing pornography, like blatant pornography, and how to address concerns related to. So, I will take a look at that myself and trust that, at this point, I'll give the benefit of the doubt that it's a resource that is intended with the best of intentions in mind for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamery. Mr. Ungeyer?
So, just quickly, just to try to keep it short here. Just a few weeks ago, I was privileged to get to spend some time in the country of Israel. It's a beautiful country and I met many beautiful people and made many new friends. And it's a very diverse country with, filled with people of great faith, where Muslims, Christians, and Jews live together and work together and harmonize together. And we all saw what happened on Saturday, where they were merciously attacked by Hamas terrorists. It was reminiscent of our own 9/11. And it's a testimony as to how life can change so quickly in just one day. And we've seen it happen here. We've seen it happen there. And it's continuing to happen there. I'd like to ask everybody associated with the Enfield Public Schools to keep those people and the hostages and the families of those that were murdered in your thoughts and in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ungeyer. Ms. Pickett?
I'm going to mirror those sentiments, Mr. Ungeyer. And I think unfortunately, these events are impacting people in many unique ways. And so, again, thoughts go to many folks who are impacted by that tragedy. I want to thank Christina and Maureen for coming out tonight. Sometimes it can be challenging to talk about school subjects that are impacting decision-making in your students. And you do it really with poise and really about how it impacts you and your students. So, I appreciate that. I'm going to mirror some of what Mr. Hamery said. Regarding candidate qualifications, I encourage folks to look at the charter and to get involved with the registered party that you are affiliated with, that town committee. That is where decisions are made. I also want to thank you, Maureen, for your thoughtful feedback for the high school regarding scheduling, flexibility, and the impact of Eagle Block and the reduction on students and that time. I think that's really thoughtful feedback. So, I hope folks are listening and thinking about how we can address that. With that in mind, I've asked the board chair and Mr. Dreszek that I think the high school is also doing really amazing things. The Career Center, like Ms. Cushman mentioned, and through the Curriculum Committee, we've heard about the online program of studies, the multiple pathways and certifications and college credit courses that are available. I think it would be really great if we could hear about that because the high school, since the town has invested so much in creating the high school and one of the driving forces behind that was to offer more opportunities for our students. And I think the high school is really capitalizing on that and is seen as a leader with doing that work in the state. I'm sorry I was a little bit off-task while Dr. Kalman was doing his report. And I don't know if he mentioned that the Stowe Early Learning Center has been designated as an Apple-distinguished school. And so, I just want to just, you know, thank you. Stowe is always a special place in my heart and I can't have the mic and not recognize their continuous commitment to doing learning in accessible and fun and innovative ways. So, thank you to Dr. Valley and all the staff there. Enfield Street, there is a Lyman Orchard fundraiser going on on the 12th. We're going to be wearing purple in honor of Maddie, also participating in the Pink Out. And on the 13th, there is a Purse Bingo event that is a joint event with Parkman. So, I encourage folks to participate in that. A PTO meeting on the 18th. A Red Robin fundraiser on the 19th, very busy PTO. A Wolf Pack event on the 20th. And then the community-wide Jack-o'-lantern festival is happening on the 21st. Please, folks, consider carving a pumpkin. Go to that event. It's so much fun. We've been going to that forever. Parkman, I don't think I'm the official liaison, but I'm a mom there. So, I want to make a couple shout-outs. One is, we had our open house and our picnic. Thank you for our PTO, who helped put the picnic together, had cotton candy and popcorn, and the kids just had a blast. It was nice to meet families and the school staff that all stayed and had a really nice organized way to get to see the school and hear about really important expectations. I also got to participate or attend, not participate, attend, the ROAR Assembly that happened on Friday. It was really exciting to see students lead much of that event. So, our fifth graders, who I think helped organize and lead the event and the students that were all recognized, nice job. There's a Spiritware fundraiser happening there. An upcoming PTO meeting on the 17th. A fundraiser at DeAngelo's on the 19th. And a fifth-grade dance on the 20th. I'm going to mirror Josh's comment here again about traffic in our schools. I know in the last meeting, I mentioned a sign on Enfield Street, by Enfield Street School. I see Mr. Santinella in the audience. I'll just like make that known. And I think for all of us and those in the community, when we think about our future plans for our schools, I know some of the proposed ideas are having them on major roads or really thinking about the traffic impact and how we plan best to make sure students are safe and flow of traffic is not impacted. And I'm going to end my comments tonight by thanking Mr. John LeBlanc. I met you at Stowe, I think, when you were first elected. So, my Cameron, I think, was a student there. We were at some event and I'm like, who is this young guy? He was like, I'm the Board of Ed. And then I started watching meetings because my son was going into kindergarten and that was during COVID times. I watched curriculum meetings. I watched the Board of Ed meetings. And I was surprised. And like Maureen, I admired how you have consistently stayed focused on students. And that is what has driven your decisions. And I am honored to have been able to serve with you. I appreciate the work that you did. And if you ever want to consider running again, I would run on your team. So, thank you, John LeBlanc, for your work. And the community is lucky to have somebody like you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Mr. Rider?
So, I have a few announcements that are district-wide and then a few specific notes that I want to touch on for the Eli Whitney families. You probably saw another reminder that went out today regarding iPad insurance. That is due October 15. And that is district-wide. So, if anybody wants to put down the $25 insurance, it is cheaper than repurchasing a $400 iPad. So, I would suggest doing that. The $25 is required annually because you're using the iPad and it costs us more than that to replace it. So, it's just an easy thing to do. You can do that through my School Bucks account. And if you have any questions, please reach out to your building administrators. Through the chair to the superintendent, secretary, Ms. Alaki, I'm going to reach out to you soon to see if we can get a date. A few of the PTO parents have reached out. They want to have one of our superintendent's meetings, PTO president's meeting with the superintendent. Again, prior to COVID, we would meet once in the fall, once in the spring. We were able to get together this past spring as that school year ended. And it kind of reignited all the excitement regarding that. So, hopefully, we can find a date to work with you on that in the next coming weeks. As a few people have mentioned, Pink Out Day is this Friday. There is a link on enfieldpto.com/ess/whitney/alltheschools. So, if you want to make a donation online, you're welcome to do so if your student just wants to bring in a dollar or four-quarters or 100 pennies on Friday to make a contribution for breast cancer awareness and breast cancer research. I want to thank Andrew DePere at Prudence Crandall, who asked if I wouldn't mind running around and collecting the money that is donated. Again, the donation is optional. Please wear pink either way. But as I do that every year for PJ Day, and will be our sixth year this December doing PJ Day together as a school district. He said, "Since everybody in the school district knows who you are, Mr. Rider, would you mind going around and collecting that for us and bringing it back to me? And we'll count that out and make a donation." I look forward to hearing those amounts and we'll be sharing that at our next Board of Ed meeting. And again, PJ Day is the second Friday of the month in December every year. So, that'll be December 8. More about that as we get closer. Also, to the JFK points that Mr. Hamery mentioned earlier, I also want to let all the parents know that JFK Club links are up and active. Look at Dr. Barrow's most recent newsletter for how to sign up for after-school clubs. I know my son is excited about Pokemon Club and Fashion Club, he had mentioned. Yeah, so there you go. Lots of options. So, specific to Eli Whitney, along with Pink Out Day, again, this Friday, October 13, the staff and students at Eli Whitney will be celebrating Latino Heritage Month with a school-wide parade. Each classroom was assigned one of the 20 countries celebrated during this month. And were asked to make a poster showcasing that country's flag. Students and staff will line the hallways and cheer them on as one students from each classroom parades through the school, holding their country's flag. This is just one example of how our Equity Team is helping our students feel represented and be seen within our school community. Also, at Eli Whitney, we are collecting candy throughout the month of October. And I'm sure this applies to all of our K-5 schools. So, if anybody didn't mention this, I'm sure everybody's doing this. But we are collecting candy at Eli Whitney through the month of October for our Trunk or Treat event. HMS and Whitney will be doing a combined event on November 2. So, you get extra use out of your costumes. Do not put them away after the 31st, as their event will be November 2. Picture Day at Eli Whitney is Wednesday, October 18. I also wanted to mention, town-wide, this applies to all the fifth graders, that on October 20, there'll be a fifth-grade dance at Alcorn. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Admission is $5 and that includes three tickets. Each ticket can be redeemed for either a small bottle of water or a snack. So, you can already know that you'll have two snacks and a water or two waters and a snack, however you want to mix that up. If you'd like to attend, you can call 860-25- If you'd like to attend, you can call 860-253-5004, and that's the phone number for Social Services. So again, the Town of Enfield Department of Social Services are sponsoring this dance. This is open to all fifth graders at the Alcorn School. It's going to be at the Alcorn School, and it's 6:00 to 8:00 on October 20th. And then, as Mrs. Pickett mentioned, the Jack-o'-lantern Fest is coming up. It'll be October 21st, right here on the town green, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And you may have noticed Jack has gone around visiting the different schools. I personally saw him today at Stowe, and I hear he's moving to Eli Whitney this evening. So for my Whitney Wolf friends, keep an eye out for Jack. You should see him tomorrow outside of your campus. And that is all I have for this week, except to echo Mrs. Pickett's statement. I was going to also thank you, Jonathan, for your help. We've worked together for four of my six years here, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. LeBlanc?
Well, thank you, everybody, for the kind comments that you brought forward tonight. This is officially going to be my last meeting as a Board of Ed member, so I just wanted to take a minute, you know, to kind of show my appreciation and my thanks to all those I've met along the way. To Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Chris and Andy, and the rest of your administration team, it's been phenomenal working with you guys. You guys go and show that a school system, you know, from the leadership position and people buying into it, it helps everything flow consistently. And just know that, you know, with the staff and everybody that's involved in Enfield Public School System, everybody, you know, believes in you and supports you, and thanks for keeping Enfield on track. To the staff of Enfield Public Schools, you guys are mothers, fathers, teachers, coaches, everything, you know, that encompasses what a child needs in life and truly the backbone of it all. So we have phenomenal assets here in town in our school system, and they're very much appreciated as well. To the town of Enfield and Enfield Public School families, thank you for the opportunity of a lifetime. It was an honor and a privilege and something I'll never forget, being up here and getting to meet, you know, all the great people involved in our school systems. I hope I made you proud up here, even if we didn't always agree. I hope I was somebody you could go to to find out information or to get an opinion on something and maybe even some of your own thoughts and bring it forward to the rest of the board up here. My eight colleagues on the board, some who I've worked with for many years, it's great working with you all. I think each one of you brings something that you're truly passionate about, and, you know, your honor, your service up here does not go unnoticed. It's said all the time, this is a volunteer position, and when you're passionate about something and you bring that forward, that's what truly matters. To my family, first and foremost, Grammy and Grampy, they make watching every Board of Ed meeting a priority and are the biggest supporters of both an R and a D. And in today's world, that's hard to find, so. Mom and Dad, who came out tonight, and my sister at home, thank you for always supporting me through thick and thin, and I love you guys very much. Same to my uncle and my cousins back at home as well. Lastly, to my aunt sitting next to me, you were there from the start. It's been four years, and from going from being the first family members elected on a Board of Education in this town to our second term, being on leadership together, it's been, it's been, I can't, words can't even describe how much it's meant to me to be sitting up here next to you and have that family tie along with it. I hope we showed people that, you know, we didn't always agree. We come from different sides of the aisle, obviously politically, but, you know, I think we were there to listen to each other and try to find common ground to do what's best for the Enfield Public School System. So I'll end with this. I just want everybody to know how much I love Enfield. It's truly a great town. I look forward to being around, moving forward, just not, obviously, in this capacity, and I'll truly miss this. I really will. So it's just time to move on to another phase, as with anything in life, and I appreciate everything. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. I have a few things I wanted to speak of tonight. It's hard because my board members actually spoke a lot of what I was going to talk about. Ms. Siniglio and the Career Center, there's a link that we were sent so we could really see what Ms. Siniglio has done with her team at Enfield High. So I was wondering, Mr. Ryder, can we get that on the enfieldpto.com page? It really describes in detail what Ms. Siniglio has done and the partnership she's actually created with companies in town and what she's been able to do with our students. One of the things in the article, it says, "The impact on the students has been profound. As Colleen shared, kids get excited when junior achievement comes to the school. These experiences give them real-world context for the challenges they face in school and why all the effort is worth it. The presenters are authentic, they're not sugarcoating anything, and genuinely inspiring as a result." And that's what our young adults need. They don't want things sugarcoated, and they want that encouragement to get out into the real world and be able to talk to people candidly about their experiences. But the Career Center is not something that is common in the state of Connecticut among high schools. So oftentimes, the Career Center is getting calls from other high schools that are looking to start, and they are happy to help, but it's something great at Enfield High. And they, I have postcards from Ms. Siniglio from when my youngest would go to the Career Center. My two oldest, she was a math teacher at the time, and they had her for math, so she shifted gears. And I do have to say, she's a wonderful math teacher at that. So thank you, Ms. Siniglio and team and the Career Center for all you do. I was going to speak on behalf of the Stowe Early Learning Center and their distinction as an Apple Distinguished School for the 2023-2026 program term. If you want to read more specifics about that, you can go to the Enfield Public Schools webpage and look that up. I wanted to say that I also attended the Kite Dinner, and whenever I attend a Kite event, I feel like I'm among friends. It was a great night. We had two parents, volunteers that got awards, Danielle Gerard and Melissa Griffith, and this was so deserved for both of you, and I'm proud of you. Since I'm speaking on Kite, I would like to ask you all, Kite has been interested in having a conversation with one of their consultants with the Board of Ed regarding family engagement. So they gave me the date, a few dates, and policy was supposed to be October 17th, which has been canceled. So they were wondering if we could have a meeting with them after 6:30 p.m. on the 17th, so I can send more information. But I wanted to put that out there, and you can let me know if you can make it, and we would post it. So, but I want to give you more information from Kite before I'm asking for a commitment on that. Today is World Mental Health Day, and World Mental Health Day is to raise awareness of mental health issues around the world and to mobilize efforts in support of mental health. I think I said this at the last meeting, that some of the strongest people you know in your life are suffering from mental health, and when you suffer from mental health, that does not mean you're weak. You're actually pretty strong. So check on your friends, check on your families, especially as we're approaching the holidays. I want to formally welcome Izzy and Kayla. Kayla back, and Izzy is our new representative. Welcome. If you ever have any questions, you know where to find us. You can ask us at any time. I wanted to also address Ms. Griffin regarding the Eagle Block. I will follow up on that and see how it's going. I can speak to the fact that our busing issue is a definite issue. We've had to jumble around some sports teams and cancel sporting events, so we're definitely having a struggle with the buses. Congratulations to EHS Football. They are 4-0. This is amazing, because when my son graduated, they were 0-10. But I will say this, and this is what I want to say, the enthusiasm those coaches still had during 0-10 is the same as it is for 4-0. And they are amazing coaches, and actually, one of the coaches came out to see both of my boys play, and I said to him, "It's a testament that you coached these two kids," and they went on to play college football, but he would never take, Coach Liver would never take any credit for that. Let me see if I had anything else. So yes, so in true Jonathan fashion, he let me know at 10 of 6 that this was your last meeting? So I didn't have anything formally to prepare, but what I can say is a lot to Jonathan's integrity, to how he approached political issues, especially in a very trying political time. He always kind of wanted to know both sides, and then the third side, and then he'd make his decision, whether it was an unpopular decision with his own party or unpopular decision with anybody on the dais. And that takes a strong person, especially in this political climate. And I think that we're going to miss that for those of us that are sitting on the board, because it's important that people that sit up here make their own decisions and don't just feel like they're going along with a party. We've had agreements ourselves, but at the end of the day, you were very steadfast in how you felt, even if you disagreed, which gained you a huge level of respect. And I'd rather have disagreements and be respected than to just disagree to disagree. It's been really special having you up here. We were kind of hoping we would show everybody that you can sit at the Thanksgiving table and have Democrats or few Democrats at the Thanksgiving table and more Republicans, and that we could all still get along. And I did want to say that Grammy and Grampy, they do watch our Tuesday meetings, but they don't just watch them once. Sometimes they'll watch them several times during the week to talk about different things. So I know that they're watching tonight, and they'll maybe watch in a few days. But again, thank you. Your contribution to the Board of Ed and to Enfield Public Schools has been appreciated more than you'll ever know by board members and especially by staff and by the families. I think your community involvement really poised you to be a positive and advocate for Enfield Public Schools. So I really thank you for your service, and I'm going to miss you. So shall we wave one last time to Grammy and Grampy? You know they're watching. Thank you again. And I was going to take one more moment to speak to Cardo. Cardo taught automotive, and oftentimes, you know, the kids that attended auto, there's different motivations that keep kids in school, and automotive is one of them, and sports is another. There's different aspects that they want to stay in school, so I just have to end with that Cardo was one of a kind, and he will be missed. And my family actually knew him before he was Mr. Carteropoly at the high school, and again, my thoughts and prayers go out to the family. So, thank you. Item 10, unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business. Item 11, new business. Item A, policy revisions. Mr. Ryder?
So the Policy Committee members met on September 19th. We are recommending first readings of two policies enclosed in your packets are those two policies with the proposed revisions. I can tell you that one of them was just mirroring the definition of bullying was in one policy in an updated, informal way, and it was not as updated as it should be defined now in the other policy. So it was just making sure that those definitions were mirrored in the two. That's Policy 5131 regarding conduct and discipline. And then regarding Policy Number 9160, Student Representatives, there was just a small tweak that gave us the opportunity to invite the student reps to come and join us earlier in the school year than waiting towards the end of the school year, giving the schools an opportunity to maybe speak to the juniors earlier in their junior year to see if there's something that they would be interested in. And then I know that a few board members, Mrs. Pickett, sent me some other notes that they'd like to see addressed in the Student Representatives' policy. But at this time, we're just making these two small tweaks, because, as everyone knows, the makeup of both the Board of Ed as a whole and the subcommittees will more than likely change as far as members or who's in charge of them, et cetera, in the coming weeks. So right now, we're just doing those two simple, I would say, simple changes that we discussed, where it's just, again, one is just mirroring the definition of bullying in one policy to another, and one was just changing the dates in which we could approach students to come join us to be student representatives.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the policy revisions first reading?
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Hamery.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Discussion? Ms. Pickett?
Sorry. He already kind of alluded that I was going to have something to say. One, Izzy, you're still here, so I'm going to say it to you, but I encourage Kayla as well. I know that it can be very intimidating sitting up here, but policy is something that impacts students and families directly, and I would love to see more ways that we can gather student feedback. So I'm under the impression that you get the board packet like we do. Is that true? Perfect. So if there's, you know, maybe a way that you can gather student feedback on kind of how these policies read, any interest of kind of how this impacts them, I think it would be a really nice opportunity to have you both either engage in the discussion or gather feedback for us on policies. So I'm going to challenge you on that one. The other piece that I'm going to add is, especially since the student rep one, we made minimal, Policy 9160, we made minimal kind of edits on that. I think you both could be very instrumental in giving us feedback on how we might be more inclusive, on how we select reps, and what that role like looks like up here. So that's one specifically that I think could be interesting to hear your feedback on. The other policy, 5131, I appreciate the mirroring of common definitions. That can get really challenging in policies, especially when we get a lot of them, so I think that's really important. For me, I support the policy. This is more, I think, feedback to, through the chair, to the superintendent, but it's not a direct question. It's more of a comment. I think this is where policy is really important. It's important to have clear procedures. My worries or concerns are really around the implications of what policy looks like in action. So as a Board of Ed members, we are notified from you around 911 calls and suspension data. I think we recently actually got that, which is all directly impacts of this policy. And so my worry or my wonder is, you know, how can we think about our plans to address our data? And I know I came here as a parent, I think, right, when coming out of COVID, and talked about our discipline data and the disproportionality, especially around our students of color and students with disabilities. So I would love to hear more about our equity plan and especially careful attention to our bias and discipline process and how we might help families and students through these challenging processes that are outlined in our processes, so like hearings, appeals, those can all be scary and hard to navigate. So it's my hope that families are supported through these challenging things. So that would just be my feedback to all of us when we think about the policies that we vote on. Policies help drive decisions, but it's really about what these policies look like in action. So again, excited to hear more about the district's strategic plan and equity plan specifically around not only our discipline practices, but how we're really identifying the needs of students. Because to me, discipline is really, behavior is a form of communication, so how are we supporting students' behavioral needs?
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zakri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamery?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item B, approve the schedule for regular Board of Ed meetings for 2024. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I could just add one quick thing to what Dr. Kalman brought up, just as a point of reference, I don't have any specific details. You're going to hear a lot about the change in the kindergarten age, and I actually had a meeting with Commissioner last week, and to be quite frank, no one really understands it at this point. So I just want to put it out there, you're going to get a lot of questions through Kite, you're going to get a lot of questions from parents. It is going to create a childcare issue, particularly for parents who are banking on their students to start, and now they're no longer eligible because of their birthday. There is, unfortunately, the way the legislation was written, the decision to, for a waiver, and the reason I think is important to say this tonight, is that the waiver is up to the discretion of the principal, but there is no metrics for the waiver at the moment. So what that would include would be, obviously, testing a child's ability to see if they're able to enter kindergarten. That document, that assessment, does not exist. We're being told that the state is going to possibly provide one to us. It may be a local, we don't know. So there's a lot of conversations. Michelle Middleton and I were actually having a very long conversation about this today because some districts have come forward with what their plan is.
to what their plan is. Um, stay tuned. That's part of the strategic plan is parents need to know, is it doesn't affect till next year's students, but that is going to possibly be a policy issue for you guys to address. Um, but you are going to start getting those calls relatively quickly from parents who are in pre-K now wanting to know, "Do I extend in pre-K? There's no seat, but I'm supposed to go to kindergarten. My child's not eligible." That all happened through the legislative process. We're aware, there is no definitive answers at this point coming from the state. I know their work, the commissioner has assured us they are working on it, but they were taken aback by this at the same time. So that was just relevant. Thank you, Dr. Kalman, for bringing it up. I forgot to mention that in the board update. Um, but going on to what this is actually about, approving the schedule. Uh, Connecticut law does require the board to provide the town clerk with a listing of meeting dates for the board's regular meetings for the upcoming year. Enclosed in your packet is a list of regular meeting dates for the, uh, for the year 2024 in connect, in accordance with Board Policy 9321, time, place, and notification of meetings that require the Madam Chair's signature. So therefore, you could take any action appropriate about setting your calendar for next calendar year.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the schedule for the regular Board of Ed meetings for 2024?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ungeyer, second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamery?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 11C will be, um, addressed after item 16. So moving on to Board Committee Reports. Curriculum Committee, Ms. Pickett?
All right. I'm going to take a minute on, um, this update because I think it's an important one. Um, so on the 21st, um, we met as a committee and, um, had a presentation of the book approval process. Um, I think it was a, a great discussion where our staff outlined the process that they use, um, to review instructional materials, um, books in the classroom, so for classroom libraries and for our overall, um, school libraries. I think it's, um, important for folks to know, this process is driven by our policy 6160, um, and that it's really around a collaborative approach. Um, there is a rubric, um, there is all these guidelines that were reviewed with, um, our admin and department coordinators. Um, the purpose of this is really to think about positive instructional outcomes for all students. Um, there is a careful review of existing and any new inventory that comes in. Um, like I mentioned, there is a screening guide that is collaboratively, um, completed by teachers. Um, they are screened to adhere to that policy that I previously mentioned, um, and for being developmentally appropriate and purposefully aligned to our curriculum. Um, if a book is being used for instructional purposes, so not for the whole school library, it has been pre-read by an educator. Um, and there is kind of three processes, one for our whole school libraries, one's for instructional books, and one for classroom libraries. Um, I think there was a really fruitful discussion, um, in a bipartisan way about how we select books, um, and how those decisions are made. Um, and, uh, there were some items from the table that were also addressed that will be coming up in upcoming meetings. Um, so we had some colleagues who had reviewed some of our Sex, Ed, and Health course, um, materials where Michelle Middleton was able to answer some questions regarding some of their opt-out lessons. Um, I had also asked some questions regarding our K-3 reading, um, assessment. So that has changed. It's no longer iReady. Um, it is now CBM. So as a parent, my child came home with their iPad and I logged into iReady to check their scores, um, and just on math. So for parents who are doing that, um, are worried about how your child's reading is assessed, my guess is that will be part of discussions for upcoming parent teacher conferences. Um, and that is a new universal screener for our reading. And so there will be some discussions regarding our K-3 reading curriculum, um, and we will be getting an update on that process at future curriculum meeting updates, um, along with continued conversation around tag. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, um, Dr. Kalman?
So the October 2nd meeting, uh, has been postponed until October 17th. Uh, the Finance and Budget Committee met on September 18th and the end of the year budget summary for fiscal year 2023 was reviewed. Uh, the projected original and the actual end-of-year budgets were, of course, the same, 73,270, 73, excuse me, 73,275,252 dollars. The budget for financial year 2024 is 75,228,354 dollars and the end-of-year projection is, uh, 81,659,580 dollars with projected reimbursements of 5,007, 5,731,226 dollars to make up the difference. Uh, the Nutrition Services, uh, net profit as of June 2023, year-to-date, was, uh, 65,053 dollars, 25 cents. Net worth was 1,376,397,26 cents. We currently do not have reports for July or August, or we didn't at that time. With respect to the tag investment, the value as of August 31st, uh, 2023 was, uh, 3,037,432 dollars and 32 cents. The value of investment has really stabilized between 2.8 million dollars and 3.5 million dollars since 2017. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Policy Committee, Mr. Ryder?
Uh, as we discussed earlier with our vote, we last met on September 19th. Um, we had a few minor corrections, which first reading was approved earlier this evening. Thank you. Uh, second reading will be at our last meeting of this term. Um, and because we are only meeting one more time as the current ninesome, um, we have canceled our October policy meeting and will be reconvening, uh, November 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Leadership Committee, um, I did not schedule a meeting, um, due to Monday being a holiday. Um, but if it is the will of leadership, we can certainly look to put something on the book for, uh, before our next meeting in October. Um, item, uh, pre-K through five, School Modernization Committee?
Uh, so, uh, we invited our SMC, uh, to come to our last Board of Ed slash Town Council joint meeting on September 26th. Um, we'll be meeting with them again soon with some updates and next steps. And now that we are going to move forward as a formal pre-building committee, et cetera, and what those steps might entail. And I would like to encourage everybody currently on the SMC who would like to see this project continue to please apply to be a part of that committee as well. And as soon as I know more about that, I will share that with the group.
Thank you. Um, can I just add to that? I encourage, um, if you didn't see the September 26th meeting?
Yes.
I encourage everyone to watch it. Um, they talked about the upcoming plans and site recommendations and review that they're doing. So it was, it was very insightful. So, um, and then there, you can also find this information on the, um, Enfield Board of Ed website. Joint Facilities Committee, Mr. Ryder?
Last met on September 28th. Our next meeting is later this month on October 26th.
Uh, the JFK Building Committee?
They met on October 5th. Um, meeting minutes aren't posted until they're official, so I don't have the minutes from that meeting. I was not able to attend. Um, but, um, that should be available soon on the town of, uh, Enfield's website.
Perfect. Um, Joint Security Committee, Mr. Ryder?
Uh, no report.
Um, Enfield Mental Health and Wellness, um, Work Group?
No report.
No report, okay. Uh, the Enfield Cultural Arts?
Thank you.
Mr. Hamery?
Thank you very much. Uh, first thing, Value Rep Theater is, uh, in rehearsals right now for their upcoming production of Saving Fairview, and that runs November 3rd, 4th, 10th, and 11th, happening at his nuntuck. So, uh, clear your calendars for that. Uh, speaking of calendars, the Enfield Culture and Arts Commission does have a calendar that is very active and getting more full, uh, as events are populated there. So I would encourage everybody that's interested to learn what's going on with the Enfield Culture and Arts Committee and the events that they're promoting, that, uh, you can find that on their Facebook socials, or on their socials, rather, and there's links to their calendars. Uh, it's a Google calendar, so you can, uh, save that as a, uh, updatable calendar to track things. But that includes activities happening at the library, like a movie day. There's activities happening at the Historical Society, um, lots of different things happening. So find that, again, on their socials. Um, just a quick reminder that the Natalie needs a kidney still, so please take a look for the, uh, Facebook group, A Kidney for Natalie for more information. Um, the Opera House Players, they have a couple of things going on, uh, this Friday. First is going to be a Halloween costume sale, and these are not your, uh, department store or, you know, dollar store costumes, nothing against those. These are like costumes from the shows that they've done over the years and the shows that they've, uh, gathered the costumes from, from other organizations. But prices start incredibly reasonably because they're looking to make some space in their new location at 100 High Street. So the sale is going to be happening Friday from 5:00 to 9:30 and Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00, 100 High Street here in Hoyoke, uh, Hoyoke, yeah, High Street here in Enfield. And, um, it's going to be Opera House Players Costume Sale. In tandem with that, Friday night is their Villain Cabaret. They're going to be holding, hosting a, uh, series of performers doing shows and the villains from those shows in themes for the Halloween season. Um, that starts at 7:00, uh, 7:30 PM and, uh, tickets are $15 online or at the door. Uh, it is good to know that, uh, they put the precaution out there that it's, uh, may not be suitable for, uh, for children, so use your discretion. And, uh, if you have any questions, give them a call. Uh, you can find out more information on their website, opera house players.org. Um, Enfield Culture and Arts Commission was active at the, uh, Community Paint Day this past Saturday at the Enfield Produce and Deli. It was a great time there. I was able to get some, uh, paint on my hands, painting strawberries on the wall. So if you see those, the strawberries on the wall, that was kind of me. Um, I, I looked, actually look forward, forward to going back there and helping them out with some more things because, uh, there's a lot of, uh, real estate on that wall to, uh, paint and, uh, the gentleman doing the work is, uh, right, uh, probably there right now, doing that work. Um, one other thing, the PFLAG group is meeting for a peer support group online this time. It's going to be Saturday, October 21st at 6:30 PM, and you can find that information at pflagenfield.org. Um, and I believe that's it for now, but I probably forgot something.
Thank you, Mr. Hamery. Item 13, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes September 12th, uh, from September 12th, 2023?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hamery?
Seconded.
Second by Dr. Kalman. Any discussion? Show of hands? Do I have a motion to approve the Special Board of Ed meeting minutes from September 26, 2023?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pickett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Show of hands? Item 14, approval of accounts and payroll?
So because of the summer vacation, we have a number of certifications.
But we don't, it's not on the agenda, so I don't.
Oh.
Okay, so it would, it would go on the next agenda and we would do it all.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Anybody else want to quit early? That's why, that's why Jonathan left early, yeah.
Item 15, Correspondence and Communications. Um, I have something I want to say, um, that I, I left out of my board member comments on purpose. Um, I would like to say happy birthday to the baby of the LeBlanc family, Colin. He turns 20 today. Um, it actually worked out. He has football this evening and his roommates are cooking him dinner. Um, that, his brother is part of those roommates and he said, "We'll cook Colin dinner, but can you send us money?" Just add that in. True story. Um, but I would like to wish my son a happy 20th birthday. Um, you make us very proud. Um, and thank you for, for being you. He is a really kind, nice boy. So I just wanted to say that. Item 16, Executive Session. Um, Mr. Drazek, we have a, okay. Do I have a motion to move into Executive Session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ungeyer, second by Ms. Pickett. Show of hands? What is it? Yes, I know. Yep. Okay. Um, I'd just like to say, um, thank you, everyone. We are not coming back up here, but thank you. Have a good night.